On today's episode of Sticky Note Conversations with Erica Washington.
There was a lot of parents who had issues with the school district and there was a lot of changes happening during the pandemic. And folks just didn't know where to get the information.
How would you break up the school district and it not be inequitable? Like, that's the question that I wonder.
My middle is on the spectrum. I know that teacher that really cares for her is really important for her. So I know that's how she's successful because that's what we have seen.
I'm very excited, extremely excited, that I have the illustrious, the talented, the youngest ever sworn in to the Clark County School District trustee, mother of three, joining for Sticky Note Conversations with Erica Washington. So I always let people introduce themselves and however they identify, you know, what comes first. Because sometimes it is that title, but sometimes it's something else. So I would like to welcome Brenda and you tell me, who the heck are you?
Thank you. I'm so excited to be here. I'm Brenda Zamora. I'm a mother of three, three girls, to be exact. I always like to mention that I have to handle two Leos and one Pisces. So just people get an idea of what I have to deal with at home. They are 10, nine, and a three-year-old. So it's a lot of fun and they keep me busy. I am a community advocate, I like to title myself. My hobby is being a Clark County School District trustee for District D, which is majority east side of Las Vegas, a little bit of central Las Vegas. I take all of UNLV and the strip area. It's really exciting because it's a really diverse group of folks that I have in my district. So it's always just great meeting people in my community who just come from different backgrounds. And I get to learn, you know, a little bit more about Las Vegas just as a whole. But that's, that's me, just trying to save the day in education.
So for people who may not know, what does a school board trustee do?
So we set up policies in the district for just anything, any type of policy, from admin all the way down to our schools directly. We also, CCSD is really interesting because we are under a balanced governance. So I think it's really important to mention that we don't do day-to-day operations. That actually really falls under our superintendent. It's really difficult because as a trustee who really cares about their community, it's hard not to be able to kind of help step in and fix some of the day-to-day issues that we see in our community that are major issues that are happening. So we just focus on the policy side of it and we do our strategic planning. We're actually in the middle of starting our strategic planning for the next five years because our 2024 strategic plan came to an end right now. So we're in a really interesting time as trustees and I think as a board, and I'm really excited to see.
And a lot of people may not know that Clark County School District, CCSD, is the fifth largest school district in the country. And then according to, and I don't know how accurate it is, it is for 2024, but at one point, at least in 2021, it was ranked 49 out of 50, ahead of only Honolulu, Hawaii at the time. And then I know it kind of jumps up and down. Sometimes Mississippi is worse and then, you know, Las Vegas or Clark County is a little bit better. But we seem to have stayed for a good long time at the very bottom of the bottom when it comes to quality in the school district. Why do you think that is?
So what I've learned, because I do want to mention, I've only been on the board for a year and four months. What I have learned is just depending what stats you're looking at. Nevada as a whole, yes, we're in the bottom like 40th and it goes up and down. But I think the biggest issue that I've seen is that there's just so many different assessments that are happening throughout the state. And I think that's what kind of fluctuates the numbers sometimes of where we're at with just in education as a whole. They have shared with us, they as the state of Nevada, has shared with us that in some things like magnet, our magnet schools are one of the greatest things we have actually in the country. That's what kind of will bring the average a little bit higher. That's something that I do pride, you know, in saying that we have really great magnet programs. We have really great CTE programs. We have, you know, these programs in our, our schools throughout this county. But then sometimes we do know that when it comes to testing, that average is very, very low. We have, and that has to do with attendance, like our attendance throughout the district is really low. And that's something we're struggling with. I think we've seen that all across the state. But our numbers are just always fluctuating up and down. And we just need to focus on those numbers, I think, as we're going into this new stage of doing our next five years, our planning for next five years. What are some other counties doing and pulling that information in and seeing how we can implement it here in our state? It's just also very interesting. Our state just has a lot of rural areas as well. So when it comes to the numbers throughout the state, when you're looking at things nationwide, we are the most interesting because of the amount of rural counties that we have. And then Clark County being just the fifth.
It's such a large space.
Yes.
Which also includes some rural, like Clark County is urban and not very urban at the exact same time, depending on what side of the county you're on. And I think that makes it also pretty unique. You know, you bring up magnet schools and I do want to say that, you know, we do have some really dope magnet schools. Las Vegas Academy is ranked really high in a lot of areas, especially for performing arts schools. And it's won, you know, more than a dozen Grammys, I think. So, you know, it's not so much that every school is awful. It's that, that there's an issue with continuity, I think. And at one point, I know that they were really talking about breaking up the school district because it was so big. Is that a conversation still happening?
I know as we're in an election year, there was conversations from small groups of people that wanted to do a petition, you know, do the signatures and try to put it on a ballot. Yes, it's happening. I don't really have a stance if I'm being completely transparent because I have heard the pros and cons for both of the sides. And I think it's just going to be something that either way will negatively affect a group of folks.
Yeah, because it could, it could lead to segregation. You know, it can certainly lead to that. And it could also lead to the schools that have been struggling the most, that have had the least amount of resources and the least amount of teachers interested in actually spending time at that school. That could, that could exacerbate those problems because people don't want to, people don't desire to move and teach in the hood on purpose, not usually, you know? Just like anything, you want to work somewhere where there are resources available to you. You want to work somewhere where you feel safe, where you feel heard and where you can do the best job possible, not go in trying to struggle on a daily basis. But also, how do we balance that inequity when you break up a school district and you'll have certain places where everything in that area is nice and master planned? Master planned with green park spaces, with, you know, Whole Foods and other markets and nice schools that have working air conditioners. And then you end up in other areas where none of that exists. But you'll find a liquor store, you'll find six or seven fast food spaces right around the school. And yeah, and so how do you, how would you break up the school district and it not be inequitable? Like, that's the question that I wonder.
And I always think specifically about my district, like mentioned, it's, you know, a lot of the east side. And we have, and I think about District C, which is, you know, the historic west side. And those two, I feel those two districts would be the most impacted if we were to break up the school district.
So I guess it'd be a question to ask somebody, I don't know who, whether or not this is going to be a question that gets brought and answered by the legislature? Or will this be a ballot measure where the community has a say-so and can have a conversation about?
Yeah.
School board meetings. CCSD has some really fun school board meetings sometimes and they also can be very long. I want to start by first say, you, because you called this a hobby when you introduced it, right? Because it's not a full-time job because you do not get a full-time salary, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, what does a school board trustee make?
Nine thousand a year.
Woo, goodness. Out here.
I'm a baller.
Birkin bags, Birkin bags and Louboutins, all that, right? Okay. So. I mean, my first question is always, why? Why? Why did anybody decide that the, that this shouldn't be a full-time actual job? Especially with the fifth largest school district in the entire country. And I don't know across the country, how many school boards are full-time, full-paid salary positions? But it's one of those things that it should be. Because how can you concentrate and really throw down if you've got to go off and actually have another job that will actually pay your bills? But speaking to the fact that $9,000 a year divided by however many meetings you all have, some of those meetings seem to go well into the night, 10, 11 o'clock, midnight sometimes. Why are these meetings so long?
So actually, I feel very lucky because our meetings have been very short. I think the longest since I've been on the board, the latest we came out of a meeting was 10 o'clock. And that is shocking because before I was on the board, I would attend, you know, with the work that I was doing with you, Erica. And we would go, be there till midnight, one in the morning, two in the morning. So there has been a lot of policy change. Not for.
Is it a policy that the meetings can't go that long?
Well, the legislator just passed this past session that meetings can't go past midnight anymore. And there was a policy on public comment because that's what was making the meetings just take so much time. It was public comment periods. So unfortunately, I'm not a supporter of the new public comment policy because that means, you know, now we start our meetings, there's no public comment at the beginning and we do our business items that we have to do. And then at the end, we have public comment. But because there's no set time for public comment, people are, you know, have stopped showing up and speaking up, which it's unfortunate as, as the person that I am and how I started in this work, I would just show up to a board meeting. If I felt compelled to do public comment, I was able to just sign up whenever. Now we're very strict of when you can submit a yellow paper if you want to do public comment. You can't do it between, you know, someone speaking, they're just, it's very limited. And it has cut down time for our board meetings, but it's also cut down, I feel like, a lot of the voices and a lot of the people that want to show up and.
Have people voiced their disdain at this new policy?
Yes, and we actually fought, some of the trustees fought hard to bring it back on the agenda to see if we can change it. It came back during a work session at the beginning of this year. And we, because of the work sessions just not being as public as regular board meetings, we actually only had about two people from the community show up to voice their opinion, which is unfortunate. You know, it just, it didn't, we didn't have the outcome we wanted. We definitely wanted to overturn that policy and go back to what we had before and we weren't able to do that. But I can say that we tried, some of the trustees and I, we tried.
So I want to go back a little bit. Why did you want to run for this, knowing beforehand that the meetings at that time could have gone till 1:00 AM? Knowing that you were going to make $9,000 a year? Knowing that people were going to have all kinds of comments and opinions about you and the board as a whole? But even you as a person, whether they know you well or not, but you're a part of this collective of this, that's running this school district or looked at as running this school district, that ranks so low, you know? You know, across the country. What made you wake up in the morning like, I want to do that? That looks like fun.
It actually makes me very emotional to think about it because it's been an interesting road. I was showing up because, you know, we were doing organizing. And for the folks who don't know, I started at Make It Work and I was an organizer there. And we had a Facebook show with Tamika Henry called The Rundown. And we had to go to school board meetings. And that came about because during the pandemic, when we were calling, when we were doing calls to the community to see what they needed, to be able to guide them to resources, there was a lot of parents who had issues with the school district. And there was a lot of changes happening during the pandemic and folks just didn't know where to get the information. So that's where the rundown actually came about and I think was birthed more than anything. And we decided to just be there in person. And the calls that I would have with community people and just parents, those voices, I felt like weren't being heard at the board meetings. I remember a specific board meeting where they were saying, you know, yeah, we have our Wi-Fi buses, they're doing great. You know, that's the best thing we've ever come up with. And I had to go up there and say, actually, no, you know, it's in the middle of summer. Some of these kids like are struggling, parents have to sit next to the bus with the kids. The parents have to be there with their car, their AC running because they weren't letting the students in the bus to even do their work. And I felt like those are the voices and the stories that the board wouldn't see. And that's, you know, direct impact to our community. Specifically, it was the people who didn't have Wi-Fi in their homes. And I definitely realized in that moment that there's just certain voices not being heard. So I decided to just run. I had seen a previous, you know, trustee campaign happen. And we joke about it now because I said, oh, I will never run for trustee. And sitting where I'm sitting now, we just, you just never know where life takes you. But I, I just did it. I felt it was necessary. I felt like I was going to be the best candidate for my district specifically. We needed, you know, that to break, to build that bridge between the community and the district. And I felt like I was probably one of the right people to do it. I think I had built trust within my community specifically here in the east side. I had been out and about, I attended events just for fun. Like everyone knew my kids, everyone knew I was a mother and I knew their stories. So I thought it would just be easier for me to try to be on the dais and bringing up these topics and these stories over just showing up for public comment. But yes.
So I, I would also like to say, yes, you was, and also you were an organizer for Make It Work Nevada, but you were also the best producer slash multimedia producer of The Rundown and Play Cousins, which I'm sure taught you a lot about how to organize people to show up, podcast interview.
We can't forget MEMS. I loved MEMS.
And MEMS, yes, I was just talking about that, I don't know, on something, I think something Skylar is having us do it because it's April, so it's our anniversary, number six or eight, depending on how you look at it. So Make It Work is just out here, continuing to make it work. But, you know, being able to do shows like that and being able to, especially The Rundown, I was so excited about what The Rundown could be. And it, it sort of fizzled after a while, but it fizzled more because we didn't have the capacity to, to really dive as deep as we wanted to with folks and their busy schedules. Because as someone is running for a school board, as someone is even on the school board or trying to attend those meetings, I go back to thinking, I don't know how you all do it at that $9,000, you know, pay structure and knowing that you have a full-time job, knowing that you have three children. We were just trying to produce a show about it and that took a lot of time. If you'd call, if you actually attended the meetings, did the research behind, what were they even talking about? Why were the people mad or why were people supporting this? And then, you know, having the show about it and wanting to engage people, that's a lot of hours by itself. So, but I really love doing The Rundown and maybe we'll figure out a way to do it again. You know, with a sitting school board member who might be interested in such a thing. That would be fun.
I would love that. I love that idea.
That would be fun.
One of my favorite projects I think I've ever done in my life.
Yes, it was, I enjoyed it. I really, it really was good. And I think that's why everybody else does shows now, is because we did it.
I say that all the time, Erica. I say it all the time. Because for the record, we did a Facebook show first.
MEMS was first.
Well, it was called Thirsty Thursdays with.
Oh, it was called Thirsty Thursdays, which was so funny that we called it Thirsty Thursdays. Like that we actually thought that was a okay name.
I always think about that. I'm like, that was Thirsty Thursdays first, but people tuned in, you know, they wanted the tea.
And we had that puppet show.
Oh, my God.
Which I always say, we don't really have to talk too much about that, but we did have a puppet show.
I do remember that.
Look, I'm, I'm all about, throw ideas out there, see what sticks.
You know, and that's the little voice I have in my day-to-day job. It's your voice saying, just see what sticks to the wall. And I definitely, that's, that's what I do at work. I, I have someone, I have a coordinator and she'll pitch ideas and I'm like, try it on, we'll see if it sticks, you know?
Right. You know? Because I mean, what do you, I mean, what do any of us know, right? We can only try to reach people. We can only try to make change. We can't say for sure that anything will work. But if we have an idea and we really like it and then I say it to you and you really like it, well, that's two people. And we have different backgrounds and we have different, you know, ideas on what we do in our spare time. So if we like something, then obviously there are going to be other people who either fit my demographic, it fits your demographic, and then hopefully that brings in more people. So that's all you can do is see what sticks. Sticky No Conversations, let's see if it sticks. So, so far, so good. I think this will be episode number 16, I think we're going into, which is a not, not a bad number for a hour-long podcast weekly. It's a lot of friggin' work, but here we are on a Sunday recording. Not because we couldn't be doing something else, but because we all care about the things that we care about.
We're passionate.
Passionate, full of the passion, full of it. And so that passion, is that why you thought you were the best for the job? Because a lot of people will say that, especially there's around election time, people are like, oh, anybody can run. Anybody can run for office. Everybody should give it a try. If you feel like you have that thing and you feel like you care about this issue, you should run for Senate. You should run for school board. You should run for mayor, whatever it is. But then there are some people who actually have it and then other people who don't. So do you, what is it that you felt like you had that you were like, no, I am the person for this job?
I think it was personal for me as well as a mother of three. My oldest, she has an IEP. My middle is on the spectrum. I know that a teacher that really cares for her is really important for her. So I know that's how she's successful because that's what we have seen. For my oldest with an IEP, I know it's important to have, you know, the great, good specialist that will be there and be patient and give her the services that she needs. I personally had to struggle with CCSD as a mother of an IEP child to just even get her vision services because they were telling me she didn't need it.
Explain to folks what an IEP is.
It's an individualized education plan. An IEP can be for any student who might be on the spectrum. It could be for students who have medical reasons, which is why my oldest has it because she's had 10 surgeries and she's 10 years old. So she's had a really, you know, tough life, but she's there and she's surviving and making it work. So the IEP just helps her in case of any medical issues that might arise. She has that plan that if she needs to be at home because of a surgery, they will give her education at home so she can continue, you know, having the education she needs to be successful. So then I had to struggle with even vision services for her. She is legally visually impaired and the district would tell me she didn't need any tools. And it was a struggle for, I think, about two years until we got a new specialist. And then I was a year into the board and things changed. But that's what even was more upsetting because this should be equal to everyone. I don't have to be in a certain position for my child to get the services she needs. So from that, it's a lot of, I wanted to learn as much as I can being on the other side. So I'm able to share that with parents who are having the same struggles, you know, what needs to be done. During my campaign, it wasn't much of, you know, language of I'm the right person, I'm a mom. Like, it was very much of, this is what the board does and this is why it's important for you to care. And it was a lot of voter education more than anything. And I think that's what I focused on. I had already told myself the win wasn't going to be actually winning the seat, but knowing that I influenced another parent to be able to do this, who might have had the extra time, you know, more time than I did or has the ability and the privilege to be a full-time trustee. Or the win was just making sure folks understood, you know, the government systems more than anything. So it was a lot of that. Then I realized how big my district was specifically and how much love I had for my district. And I can speak of just the neighbors, right? My neighbors, you know, were going through this with their children. And my neighbors, you know, didn't understand this part of how they can help and how they can actually find the right school for their kid. Specifically, like we have COSA. COSA is Change of School Assignment. You know, you have the ability to just choose a different school for your child within the district. So it was a lot of education. It was education-heavy and I felt like I can relate to my community. I, I've been through a lot in my life. I've, I've faced a lot of issues that I think a lot of our grassroots organizations in Las Vegas specifically focus on. So I can relate. I felt like I was very relatable in that way as a parent, as an individual, as a woman. Just anything, I was able to connect with my community. And I just felt like I could be their voice. I could speak from experience when I'm sharing their stories on the dais.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think public school issues, you know, is, it falls under RJ work for me. So reproductive justice, this is reproductive justice. The right to be able to raise your children in a place where you live, wherever that is, wherever you can afford to be, that whatever school is in your, that you are zoned for, will be a good school for your kid, that you will have the resources. You'll have the teachers who will be patient with your children and, and want to sit down with the parents who understand their IEP needs. And that is, I think, one of the biggest struggles. I think that, you know, folks who don't have the means to just pick up and live anywhere or send their kid to a private school is the idea that you may not have a choice but to send your kid to what is considered a one-star school. And something somebody told me recently, because, you know, we've been in the habit of calling them low-performing schools. And she said, I don't believe that any of them are low-performing schools. They're just low-rated schools who lack, and those schools that lack resources. And, you know, it was an aha moment for me to say, I need to stop saying low-performing schools because it's not the school that's performing low. But there's somebody performing low that is trickling down to make this school not be able to do the things that they want to. Because I think that probably a good 90% of the teachers want the best for their children. There are always going to be those outliers. But the majority of people who go into teaching do it because they want to teach. And they want, especially if they're doing it full-time and not as a, you know, a permanent substitute or what have you. So.
Yes, my, my kid's school now, it's not a high-rating school. It's not a low-rating school either. But when I had seen the star rating, I was really shocked because I have a really good relationship with the school. The principal, the teachers, the librarian, everybody, every single person in that school. And it shocks me because I. And it shocks me because I know that they're passionate, my kids love them. My kids, you know, all they talk about is great things about the school as a whole, but we're not rated high. And it's, it's kind of just, you know, just test scores falls in, attendance falls in, but attendance is just really, I think, the most not dangerous, but I think it's the most interesting topic that really affects everything as a whole. Like just district, just schools, performance, everything.
Why, why is attendance so bad in CCSD? Why is that such a, a struggle?
I'm also an executive member for the Nevada Association of School Boards. And so I work.
That sounds fancy.
It, it is my new title. I just got moved to the executive member, um, last month. So it's the association with all the school boards, like RUL, all of them, Washoe, everyone. So it's, it's really interesting to, to learn. I recently learned that attendance, it's actually all across Nevada. Everyone's having issues with attendance, even the county that has one high school and they're have, are having issues. Here in Clark County specifically, I know it's a mix of just transportation. That's what I hear a lot from my community specifically, is just transportation, you know, bus show up late. They just end up going back home, they just don't go to school. A lot of what I see personally is also sickness. Kids, you know, are getting sick, I think more often now than they used to, it feels like. I think after the pandemic, we saw an increase of just different viruses. And, and kids stay home and then it just affects attendance. I know my kids, my kids specifically, they really struggle with, with health issues. We could do our vitamins, we could do everything, but it's still, you know, they're contagious, they get each other sick. And then when you have the homes with more than one child, that sickness will spread and it's just the same cycle for about a month. So it's, um, I think it's just a lot of health. We don't live in the best, you know, climate either. We are very much of a desert over here. And there's just kids who have, you know, asthma that I know I think of those families. And if it's a bad weather, you're just not going to go out. There's a lot of factors.
Yeah, and I think the, um, the idea of transportation being a really big factor in folks being able to make it to school. You know, leads to another issue around infrastructure, you know, and economic justice. And folks not having enough to be able to afford a car, especially in a space where there aren't a lot of options for public transportation. So that leads into, is the school district struggling because of, um, economic infrastructure, because people aren't making a thriving wage, they're barely making a minimum wage. And I recently read in the review journal a couple of weeks ago that, um, for a family of four to live comfortably was that they, their income needed to be about two hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars a year, something like that. It was somewhere right around two ninety, two ninety-six, um, for a family of four. And that was two adults and two children, not one adult and three children, not, you know, you know, don't add a dog in there, you know, or goldfish probably, you know, they, they're not going to eat as well. So if that is the case, then I don't know how we get to the point where the school district matters more, because I think that's also the thing. In the time I've lived in Las Vegas, which was sixteen years, I never, it never felt to me as though the school district was at the top of anybody's list of importance. And that is also included in this work that we do around electoral work. There has never been a time where a funder or, uh, a foundation has said, you know what? We want to donate money to your organization so that you can work on school district races. So that you can work on organizing around the school district or organizing around schools. That's never been a thing. And not to say that nothing exists, there's been things, there've been pieces, um, around like, you know, girls being pushed out, um, in higher suspension rates, that sort of thing. There's been some conversations around e- equity when it comes to testing and or, um, free lunch and reduced lunch, that sort of thing. But never the overall, hey, we need to throw down to make sure that we have the right people on the school board. And that are, that's leading in a way and that we're engaging parents and community members to be a part of the progress. And so, and I've brought that up to many people and it's sort of fallen on deaf ears. But at the same time, we also know and have read, and you can research that in other places such as Texas, there are, um, school board takeovers happening. Where, uh, really conservative folks are coming in and, um, now deciding what should happen in school boards, you know, and what should happen in school districts. So if we know that this is a way that they are, um, and I'm using they very loosely. If we know that a more conservative side that is interested in banning books and possibly banning, you know, DI and affirmative action. And, you know, not wanting certain historical things to be talked about, you know, including, um, you know, genocide or slavery and that sort of thing. If we know that folks are really trying to infiltrate through the school board, why are we not spending more time trying to push back and protect what we believe, and by we, I mean the people who believe it, whoever that is, um, that our young people have the right and it's necessi, and it's necessary for them to know all the facts. So that they can make the choices around how we, what we know about our history, so we don't repeat the past. And so that we can move forward in a, in a better way, whatever better looks like.
Yeah, that's, I think, was the most frustrating thing during my campaign two years ago was how people just would oversee this, these seats, specifically trustee, um, races. Because there's a lot of kids. I mean, no matter what, you don't have to have a kid in your district. You can have a niece, a nephew, you know, you have children in your life that you care about that are going through the system. You should care about what's going on in the school district and who's making those choices. I know for my election year, the conservatives had organized really well. I think they did a really good job in organizing, you know, to have someone in each seat that was up for election. This year, it's not so much like it was two years ago, but they're still showing up at these school board meetings. And they, they have the time and that's, I think, what's the most frustrating thing out of everything. They got time to go be at a board meeting, they have time to show up at these schools, you know, yell at librarians for having certain books. And that's why I, I do appreciate and feel privileged to be in the space that I'm in because I'm able to advocate for those students. Because I, I don't want to assume, but we know statistically, a lot of these families are working multiple jobs. You know, they, they don't have the time, they are too busy trying to pay these bills. Because we all know how Nevada is with just everything.
Yeah, it's like, what are you gonna do? How do, how? How do we do better? So then I guess my question for you would be, how do, how do we engage with the parents who don't have all this time? You know, because they are working, you know, maybe even more, more than one job, but maybe they're just working one job. But they don't have time to come to a school board meeting that started, you know, after five o'clock in the evening. It may go well into, you know, eleven fifty-nine.
I think something that I've, I've learned specifically from you is just meeting people where they are, right? I'm very intentional, uh, to show up to meetings if I'm invited from specific groups, seven o'clock PM. And I'll be there till nine PM, you know, at weekends. There's a lot of weekends that I spend my time working because I, you know, team up with a certain group of parents that I know are my community and know that they want to learn about the school district. But we have to have a community meeting just to start about the bare basics about trustees, right? And their role and what they do. And then having another session of how does the money work for the school district, like where does the money come from? And all the buckets of money that the district have, that it's not just money that's just sitting there and we get to do whatever we want. There's specific money, you know, for specific programs, for special education and all that. What I've been doing, I think in the past year and almost half, year and a half is being intentional about educating if they're interested. I've attended, I sometimes just attend community events. I used to do it before, I still do it now. But just specifically knowing that I can show up to this event and it, they might ask me to go up and speak. And I have to think about my thirty-second elevator spiel that I can do. That's not about me, but that's about educating about school boards and what they do. Um, I'm very intentional about making sure I hit up many groups of parents. And mentally prepare myself that, hey, I can be meeting group of parents and they can be completely against what I believe in and my values. And I'm just going to have to just have that deep conversation because I'm not one to steer away. But also having the tough conversations of this is why I believe this though. And seeing their point of view and sometimes we're going to agree to disagree and sometimes where I have educated someone in something new. So.
So we talked, we talked about you being the, the youngest ever sworn in to the, um, Clark County School District, uh, trustee board. Do you find that to be a hindrance or helpful, you being thirty in a quarter?
That's an interesting question because I think it's both. I, I like being the youngest because people underestimate me. And I get to show out and show them what I know. And then there's times where people don't know who I am because I look young. And they probably sometimes think I'm a teacher and I'm just in spaces. And I get to either hear raw stories sometimes in the spaces I'm in. And then I'll introduce myself. And then it's, but I was able to catch that rawness. I don't get to, I don't get the, oh, yes, you know, the fairy tale story. Um, I very much like being able to move around, I feel, in a interesting space. There is times I will show up and they already know who I am because, you know, either I had just the meeting that I talked a lot in or I brought up good points that teachers recognize. But it's, I think it's, I like it. I like it a lot. Because it's good and bad. People underestimate me and then I get to see the good, the raw things at the same time. But it's really I just enjoy seeing people's faces when, when I either tell them my title or I'm like, oh yeah, well, my ten-year-old. And they're like, wait, you have a ten-year-old? And I'm like, yeah, who's on an IP and, uh, you know, has vision services. And then I have another one on the spectrum and just kind of talk about motherhood and how involved I think we've had to. I've had to be with my kids to get them what they need and just a lot of the that I've done too. So I enjoy it.
What do, what do the girls think about you being a school board trustee? Do they, do they, do they understand at all, you know, what, what mommy is doing now?
So that's a really funny question too. Because, so the girls right now, because of the oldest being in an IP and the other one on a spectrum, they haven't moved schools since the pandemic, so they've just stayed in the same school. The school is not in my district, um, and that was a hard choice for me to make just because distance, trying to get them to school was a little bit difficult, but I knew that at the end of the day, that was the best choice because they don't do well during change. So I wanted no interruptions in their education and that relationship they were building with their specialist. But their specialist is actually a teacher who listens to the school board meetings, every meeting we have. And he knows who I am and he knows I'm advocating. So according to Scarlett, he, he talks very highly of me. And then I'm like, well, what does he say? And she'll just say, I don't know, he says something good. And I said, okay, thanks. And then, um, we just went to her orientation for middle school. And it's in my district, it's down the street from my house. And I went up to the principal, introduced myself. And he was like, oh, well, thank you for being here, we're so excited. The principal kind of asked her, uh, my oldest, if she knew who, like, what the trustee meant. Like there's going to be a picture of me in the office and she was just kind of like, why? And they're like, well, it's because she's the trustee for our district and we have trustee pictures on our office. And she's like, okay. And we walked away and she's like, that's weird. And I said, it's not weird. She just, I don't think fully understands.
Why do you want my mother's picture up in here? Are you gonna put mine up here too?
She just doesn't, I don't think she understands. My middle one, she's definitely out of the loop. She's just like, I don't know, I just know Thursdays, you come home late, you have meetings and we won't see you. But, but my oldest is, I'll ask her sometimes, I'm like, do you know what this means? She's like, you do something for kids and education. And I'm like, okay, thanks. So they're very just, no, not really. They just know that I do something and fight for kids and education, which I'm okay with.
Yeah, I think, I think as they get older, they'll really start to realize. But at the same time, children will also, uh, humble you into, um, you remembering that really you are the person that makes them some dinner and ties their shoes. Like, I don't know what else you do out in the world, but what you need to be worried about is, are you gonna take me to my friend's birthday party? Can we go to Target? Those are the important things.
That is.
So, um, as far as the school district goes and trustees, is this, is this a partisan seat or a nonpartisan seat?
It's a nonpartisan seat.
Okay, and so, and so that folks understand that it's not, it doesn't matter if you're a registered Democrat or Republican or independent or, you know, anything else. All of the seats are available for a person to vote on during a primary.
Yes.
Okay, good to know. And then one other question about your time with the, as a trustee. How much time would you say you spend? You talk about getting home late on Thursdays. How many hours a week are you spending on school board stuff?
Personally, it feels like thirty hours. It feels like another full-time job. I think the one factor. So before I ran, someone really, really smart that I know asked me to ask another trustee how much time they put in and how time consuming this might be. And I think at that time I asked probably the wrong trustee and the answer was about like twenty hours. And it's, and it wasn't. I realized later on that that specific trustee just wasn't attending all the meetings that are very important. So then the time was different. I, I tried to spend my mornings just catching up, I think, on emails, which I know is not a meeting, but that's also very important. The emails that we get are about between a hundred to two hundred a day. And a lot of them are from constituents, a lot of them are just issues, a lot of them is just admin stuff. And it's a lot, you have to keep on it if not you're going to fall behind. I think I was sick for two weeks and I checked my inbox and I was at two thousand and I missed that on a lot. Um, and I was sick, you know, it's just me, it wasn't that I didn't care, I was just genuinely in bed. And I could not even watch TV at that time. Um, and then we have our closed sessions that happen before board meetings. We have our regular board meetings. There's sometimes we have attorney, uh, client meetings. We have, um, we have our bi-weeklies now with our interim superintendent. Before we had bi-weeklies with the superintendent. And then what other meetings do we have? Oh, we have our briefings that are also about two hours on every other Thursday. So it's a lot, it's a lot that goes in and that's just meetings alone. That's not all the events, you know, that we have going on throughout the district. We, we get invited to just do reading week, we get invited to do open houses. We get invited to do celebratory things at our schools and. And I actually have the biggest district, um, from Clark County. So my district is the largest, so I have the most schools, the most high schools, I have the most graduations. Um, we are going into May, so we, we have graduation season right around the corner. And this year I have to take about four days off of work just to focus on graduations because it's also important to be in those spaces. I think it has a lot to do of what you want to prioritize and what you want to be seen as. You know, do you want to be an involved trustee or not type of situation? So I definitely want to be an involved trustee. I definitely want to respond to as many people as I can. There's some things that are very easy, you know, emails to just forward to the right person. There are some times that just showing up to, you know, a field day can be very important to, to the school and the teachers more than anything. And I think that's my focus is to show it, to show the teachers that I care and I appreciate the work that they do because I do. I, I mean, I live with my kids, I can't imagine what they gotta deal with, you know, trying to teach them something. So I, I'm very grateful to all our teachers and just supporting them is really important.
Yeah, there's something to that, that how much presence matters, just showing up, just being in spaces. Cause that's usually what people will say. Um, as you know, doing this work around electoral politics, you'll have voters say, I've never seen that elected official over here. I've never, they've never come over this way unless they're vying for my vote, otherwise they don't come around. And that, I think that hurts people's feelings, you know? It's like, why should I care about you when you just come around here with your hand out? And when we say we need something, you're nowhere to be seen. So it is, it's important, um, for people to know that you exist. Even if they don't need anything, if they know that you're around, then they know that you're out here, you know, giving a crap. I was holding myself back there because I almost had an F-bomb, would have had to grieve out.
And I think that's really important because I have done the organizing, you know? I, I love that I've done nonpartisan work because it's really focused on the issues. And yes, I have been one that I'm upset to sometimes that people just show up to my community for a photo op. You know, I'm working and, you know, I care about this. But when it comes down to it, you're nowhere to be seen, like you mentioned. I definitely don't want to be that person. I want to be the person where you see my face and you know that I'm here. We can have a real conversation and I could be completely honest and transparent with you and just, you know, move, go from there, seeing how I can support you.
And so, speaking of that, there's an upcoming election this year. The biggest election of our lives, apparently. How are you feeling about election year? You're not on the ballot, number one, you're, you, you do not have to run. But as a voter, as an individual, um, how are you feeling about this upcoming election? Are you worried? You know, are you hopeful? What are you thinking about?
So this, I think, is the first election year where I feel like I don't have any feelings. I've just been so focused with work. Um, so my day-to-day job, you know, does voter education, voter engagement. And I have been, my mind has been fully on how do we do education about down the ballot? And it's just been heavily focused on how can I help my community understand the roles of every person on their ballot? Not the federal, you know, not all those big ones because as we know, they don't affect your everyday life, right? So my mind has been fully focused on that. I've just been thinking about different ways to educate our voters, what's going to help. Literally throwing things at the wall to see what might stick or not. What does that mean? Like, do we do TikToks? Do we do crazy TikToks? Do we do that? Um, so I'm still continuing to do comms work in this world. Um, but as an individual, I think you're the first one to really put it on my radar or how I might feel during this election. Um, the only one that I raised, that I feel like I've put personal time in doing researches is the trustee races. Um, just because we have seven voting members and out of those seven, we have four that are up on the ballot. And that is crucial to know because if you pay attention, if you follow along at CCSD and their own politics, um, some of the work doesn't get done and some of the policies don't get passed and things just are not happening to help our community because we don't have the votes to do that. So having four seats up is really important. It's also, um, interesting to see how we're weaving in the voices of our appointed members because we also this year had four appointed members join um, from every municipality in Clark County, which has been really interesting, great to see. Uh, but really interesting of how just the dynamics work. So just personally, I think I've only invested myself in the trustee races just because I know the importance of them and what it can mean. And we might be in a good time right now to do a shift, a huge shift for our communities who are really struggling in the district. Um, we are, you know, planning our upcoming five-year strategic plan, like I mentioned. And then we are also looking for a new superintendent. So right now we are definitely in an interesting, just possible huge shift in CCSD.
Yeah, I think if no one knows anything about CCSD, they know that, um, the superintendent search is on, if nothing else.
All over the news.
Right, that would be a whole nother conversation and an interesting conversation to have because how stressful was that to come in when you came in? And there was so much going on. And I can't recall if you were there when he resigned, because there's a lot of backstory and I don't even know how to like summarize the backstory for folks who don't know. Well, try to figure that out maybe in post-production. But, um, you came in, did you come in around the time when he was leaving and then staying?
No, um, I was there in the audience. I definitely did my public comment and voiced my opinions and was part of the organizing to, you know, get people to, uh, have the trustees not vote for him to come back. So I can probably give a brief, you know, background. In twenty twenty-one, they had voted to resign the superintendent, to fire him. Not to resign, I'm sorry. The, in twenty twenty-one, they had voted to fire the superintendent. He came back, sued the district for hostile work environment. And then something happened behind the scenes, legal things happened and they decided to bring it back on the agenda. Um, the swing vote for that was actually the person that was in my seat before, Irene Cepeda. And she actually ended up voting to not fire him. So he ended up being rehired and back on the board. So that was the end of twenty twenty-one. Um, towards the end of twenty twenty-one, right before the end of the year, after election time, um, they actually ended up renewing his contract for another five years and they gave him a raise. So that was, that put the community in uproar because trustees, there was gonna be new upcoming trustees in January and that was definitely a twenty twenty-two type of problem or twenty twenty-three type of problem, because that's when I was going to be sworn in. So in twenty twenty-two is when they gave him the raise and gave him the contract renewal. Um, I came in, um, towards the end of last year, which was twenty twenty-three. Um, we did a lot of conversations of performance of the superintendent. And as you, folks, if you pay attention to politics, you know, a lot of the community was at an uproar with the superintendent because of the teacher contracts. And the whole back and forth, teachers didn't have contracts for a very, very long time. And people were upset, you know, as they should be. They were very, very upset because things were being just held back. Um, to the point where we had legislators come in and voice their opinions and asking the superintendent to resign. So around, you know, the end of last year is when things, I think, got really critical in the way of the community really, really pushing for us to, to find a new superintendent. Um, according to our meeting that we had, the president, uh, President Garcia Morales mentioned that she approached the superintendent and asked him to resign. And there was an agreeance there and that's how we ended up, you know, going back and forth about a possible buyout and everything, which was also very, very interesting. Um, and, you know, now we're, we just submitted, uh, what is it, the contract, I want to say? Or we, we put out an RFP, that's what it was. We put out a RFP last week to find a firm to help us do our superintendent search.
So you're at the very, very beginning of the stages. So an RFP, uh, request for proposals from hiring firms that would then head hunt to find the next superintendent for, um, Clark County School District. So that's where you are. So it's still a long way to go. Do you all have a timeline of when you hope to have someone in the seat by?
We actually talked about a timeline in our last work session, which was the first Wednesday of April. I don't remember exact dates, uh, but definitely the date was November first. By November first, it was what they were thinking to have our superintendent. So as of now, we have an interim superintendent and they, which was the former deputy superintendent. I've been into the role.
Has there ever been a, and, and I know this person is, um, a woman, but has there ever been a, um, actual superintendent that was a woman for CCSD? Um, not an interim, but in, but actually hired? Okay, maybe that's the problem. Just saying, I don't know.
The woman in there.
Yeah, yeah, that we might need a woman in there to straighten things out, who knows? I don't know, but I don't, it's a hard job, no matter who takes it. I think like, that's a, it's a big district and there are obvi- obviously a lot of things happening that I don't think can be fixed by just one person. It certainly has to be the superintendent and the trustees and the legislature. And however, the state board works in concert with all of this as well.
Yes, and I think something important to always mention is CCSD gets a lot of heat, you know, because of our previous board meetings that we've had before the, you know, majority of the people that are on the dais now. Uh, and people still hold that kind of against us, you know? And I think that's how we ended up, I feel like we ended up with our appointed members because of the chaos that used to be the board meetings before. I mean, those used to be shows, those used to literally be, you know, a show to watch. You would wanna.
Oh yeah, I was there for some of those, those performances.
Yes, you would wanna grab your popcorn, you know, have your snack ready and just tune in. There's probably nothing good on the agenda, but you know that something was going to happen. There was gonna be drama somewhere and they were just drama, I want to say. So with the new board members last year, with the new board members this year, it, there's definitely been a shift, you know? I think we actually get down to talking about really important issues. We get down with really great questions. We have very fruitful conversations. Yes, there's arguments here and there, but they don't get as intense as they used to. But if someone who is looking to become a superintendent, I feel like if you Google CCSD board meetings, the negative will always pop up. And that's, that's what's going to make, I feel, the process very, very difficult because we're not even interesting, we're probably not an appetite for most of these people to come because we've just have that history of the board members not being able to work together for a very long time.
Well, I hope that we are able to find someone who can put in the work and, and have the commitment to, um, Clark County and the students because it's so, so direly needed. You know, I wanna shift a little bit and think about, you know, like the rest of the election. And I know you said you spent a lot of time just thinking about trustee, but past that, thinking about the federal as well and thinking about everything that's going on. One of the questions I've been asking people is about democracy. And how do we feel about, you know, democracy at this point? And do you feel like we are living in our truth of democracy? Do you feel like we are, that you are seeing democracy right now, um, as it stands or what needs to change for us to actually be in a, a, a fully, um, democratic space and not democratic, talking about the party, but democratic as in democracy?
I wanna say we're in an interesting position. All I think about right now is just experiences that I've seen so far. Um, even just rallies that are happening with our federal, you know, folks and protests that are happening in those spaces and how negatively some of these elected officials are taking that. Um, but if we talk about democracy, that is part of democracy, right? We're able to protest and, you know, freedom of speech and seems to get shut down really quickly. Uh, because I feel like some of our people are afraid to face these people who are protesting. And that's not okay. You sign up to be on this seat, that means you're going to have to face the negative of it all. Um, and I, I don't see that right now. I, I definitely try to stay away from the spaces, you know? I don't want to be involved in all of that because it's just sad to see. Uh, I definitely have seen a ship in my, shift in my personal, just how I, how I involve myself with the parties or involve myself with folks like our senators. I've definitely just taken a step back because of all the drama, the drama from, from it and.
It turns a lot of people off, like that's a lot of, that's a reason why I think a lot of people say, oh, I don't get involved in politics or I don't mess with politics, I don't think about politics. Even though we know that that's really a very difficult thing to do because politics is ingrained in almost anything that we do. But it's that people are really turned off by the show.
Yeah, there we go. And it's the show more than anything, uh, because there's times where I don't think that these people should react the way that they do. I think that they definitely can be better about just taking it, listening and just moving on. And it's not, it doesn't have to be a debate, right? But shutting people down because they're trying to express their feelings or their emotions or where they're coming from is the absolute opposite, right? Of what they should be doing as elected officials. So it's, it's really frustrating for me to witness and see as an elected official and as a community organizer, as someone who has spent years trying to tell people like, they need to hear from you, but they're being shut down right in front of their faces. It's, it's something that, that is sort of turning me off. And I, I try to focus on the, the lower level things. And I know that you want to talk federal, but for me, it's, no, we're gonna talk about legislators because they actually deal with the money of what goes in our school district. They're gonna deal with the money with laws that affect your everyday life, how you eat, breathe and everything. Live, work, everything in your life.
And so for people who are trying to figure out who they should vote for in the upcoming election. Um, and even just thinking about trustee, you said there are four seats up, which meaning there are gonna be some folks in this upcoming primary in June. The primary's on June eleventh, right? June eleventh is the Nevada primary. And so the school board will be on there for a few different districts. What questions should voters be asking to people who are interested in their vote for, um, to become the next school board trustee?
I think an important question is to ask what work they have done in education. Um, I think people, some people, some candidates see this sea as a stepping stone um, to something else, like an entryway to their political career. And when it comes in a disingenuine way to be, be in education that way, it can be really bad, um, as a whole. I think asking also why, I think their why is really important. I, I ask everyone why, why they do anything because I think that will speak volumes of their reasons. Um, there is a lot of people on the ballot and I can, I can, I can tell you that some, you know, have hidden agendas unfortunately. So just, I think if you ask their why, you will probably get an idea of where they're coming from or what their plans are. But I think. we need folks who understand the district, who probably been through it, who, who have probably children in it, who had to fight with the district, you know, had to argue, had to, you know, deal with it just in an everyday situation, I think would be somewhat important because they will understand more than anything.
I am hoping to have some folks on who are running, but because there are so many and this is an hour-long show and I really like for people to have a lot of space and time to talk. There aren't enough hours to do everyone, um. Um, and then everyone doesn't show up anyway, right? Like you invite folks and some folks, um, have better things to do, so they don't. But we, um, well, hopefully over the next few weeks have some folks who are in the process of running um, on the show so they can talk about some of these things and I'll ask them some of these same questions to see where they stand. But I think that's a really good point to say, you know, why are you doing this? And, you know, what's your background in education? And I don't think it necessarily means that you have a master's in education. But you can certainly gain a master's in education if you have children who have are matriculating through the system and you've had to, um, show up and push back or advocate for your child in some sort of way. You learn a lot real, real fast.
Yes, cuz then you're learning from experience and you're able to hopefully teach others how to do it. So then we can all help each other out to be, to help our children, right, be successful.
What's your next? I know th- this may not be a stepping stone for trustee Brenda Zamora, but do you have plans of what's next?
I definitely have made a decision that I do want to run again when my seat is up, which is in two years. Um, but it's, it's a little stressful. I think because of the work, my day-to-day job, um, and being a mother, and at that point, I think I'll have some pre-teens, two pre-teens to be exact. So it's going to be a lot of fun, but, um, I, I am definitely, uh, have made a decision. I want to do this again. I think we are in a great space of a possible good shift. Uh, I was just speaking to other folks recently and I, I shared that I want my legacy to be a good one in the district of making change. That's good change, good trouble, I think is one of the trustees call it. I wanna do good trouble and I want that to be part of my legacy for the, for the district. Um, it is a system that, you know, my kids are going through, I went through, my siblings went through, and I want it to, by the time it gets to my youngest, it would be a more positive experience than what me and my siblings went through, what my children went through as special education kids and, and my youngest. So I'm aiming for it to be very positive. And I still have a lot of time, I, you know, it's three-term limit, four years each, and I feel like I'm still young and this is where my focus is. I think I can really create change and build bridges between the community. There's a lot of, there's not enough communication between the community and the school district and I think there's opportunity to build those bridges and be able to guide our folks to resources out there, good resources out there. So they can all be successful.
Is amazing. I'm very excited to see what you do next. I am starting a new little thing with a podcast where I'm gonna ask a question, but you have to pick a number and you're gonna pick a number between one and three thousand.
That's random, okay.
It, it's not actually cuz it's a book. So, I'm not making up the questions. The questions are in this book called Three Thousand Unique Questions About Me. And there are a lot of really fun questions in here. Some of them are really kooky. Um, but I figure, you know, it'll be a lot of episodes before I get through all of them. So you're actually my first person that I'm doing this with cuz I keep forgetting actually, but I've been wanting to do it for a while. And when I had it and I was like, I am gonna start with Brenda. So a question between one and three thousand.
Six two six.
Six two six. Alright. Alright, okay. What is your biggest worry right now? I mean, you could've got one of these kooky ones and you get one, what is your biggest worry right now? Okay, well, we're just gonna get down to the nitty gritty.
I have too many.
Well, that's for the biggest, giantest, the humongous, what is that boulder that you're trying to push?
I think my biggest worry is having a successful campaign that I'm working on at work. Um, cuz I started working on that almost two years ago. And now seeing it grow and now we're able to execute it. Um, I think that's my biggest worry, if it's going to do what it needs to do. And it, and it's called Down the Ballot, um, Guide. So it's focusing on the lower, you know, seats, but it was a big idea that I've had and I've had a good team help me out, but it, my biggest worry is that it's not going to do what I imagined it to do. And I put a lot of sweat and, and literal tears into this. So if, if people, you know, don't use it and it, it's not being used the way I imagined it, it would be very hurtful. But that's my biggest worry. Like, is it going to do what I imagined it to do?
Yeah, cuz it's your baby, it's your project, something you're trying to put together and you want it to be useful, but you don't know how it would be received. But that's also the beauty of doing something new is that you're creating something and then giving it out to the world. So you've done your part. Now people have to then use it, um, and, and see it for what it is. And sometimes that might take a little bit of time, so. You know, people don't always know what good things they have until, um, it's been a minute to marinate, so. And I will say that you are most certainly a good thing to have at the school board and you are a great thing to have at Make It Work Nevada. And I'm so appreciative of you and to see you in this position now as a full-on elected official doing this hard work and, you know, fighting these battles for our kids. There's, you were made for it and I'm very proud of you and I'm very excited that you also decided to come on Sticky Note Conversations, um, and chat with me on a Sunday. Even though it's airing on a Saturday, but talking on a Sunday.
No, and thank you. I, I miss you. I love this. I'm so excited to see, you know, Make It Work and all their new podcasts and everything they got going on. I love the team and I just, I really miss it. I learned so much and I think I get really emotional thinking about Make It Work and my time there because I, I learned a lot. And I found my, my reason and my why. Uh, for folks who don't know, I do have mixed daughters, so they will be black women. Um, and, well, they are black women cuz now they're older, but, um,
Black young ladies.
Yes, and I've learned so much just doing the work, you know, at Make A Work and learning about just the history and the real fight and I always tell some of the people who don't know about progressive issues, uh, that no one will be free until blessed women are free. And that, that includes everyone. So it's, I've learned so much and I carry that with me and all the knowledge I've had to the work that I do now with children and in education. No, I talk about, I talk about reproductive justice all the time uh, in these spaces with, with the school district because if something's wrong, I'm like, that's a reproductive justice issue. And if the people don't know, then I'm like, well, it's because we shouldn't have a dead tree at this school. Like, we need to have healthy, alive trees and not risk our kids. Uh, it, it's just anything, everything so small and just what reproductive justice really means. It's, goes down to even having great schools in your community, your neighborhood, having the transportation, like you said, having the parks, all that is reproductive justice and a lot of people don't know that. And, and I'm still doing the fight of educating.
It's an each one, teach one. That's all we can do until more people realize and you know, and live those values. You know, cuz that's all we can do is live the values every day and that's what you're doing. And that's what makes a great mother and a great elected official. So I want to say thank you. And if people want to get more information about what's going on, um, in the school district, do you have a specific email that you use for folks to be able to reach out to you, folks who are in your district?
For folks who are in my district and there's any issues that might come up, my email is And you can email me. Just, the direct emails work over going to the website. That is something important we're, we're trying to mention. Um, if you go to the website and go to contact your trustee and you go through that system, we are the last people to get it. It actually goes through probably like three people before we see the email and they say they have already addressed the issue. So I prefer having direct emails so then I can pass it along to the people that I need to go to. And then I'm in the loop and I can do follow-ups and I can hold people accountable to it.
Okay, and I will get that email from you as well and we'll add it in the show notes so that for folks who, um, weren't able to catch that, that we will have in the sno- in the show notes. Um, wherever you are listening to this on whatever streaming platform, so you'll be able to get ahold of, of trustee Zamora. And once again, thank you and we will see you next time on Sticky Note Conversations.
Thanks for listening to Sticky Note Conversations with Erica Washington, hosted and executively produced by Erica Washington with music mixing and editing by Black Gypsy LLC. Special thanks to K U N V ninety-one point five in Las Vegas. This show is powered by Make It Work Nevada, a project of Tides Advocacy.